Call to order, the regular city commission meeting for the city of Dickinson for Tuesday, July 15th, 2025. Let the record show, we're missing one commissioner, Commissioner Riddle. We begin this evening with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We'll move into our agenda. First item up is the order of business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the order of business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. There's no change to the order of business this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the order of business as presented? Not, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion on the order of business? Hearing none, all in favor of the order of business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Move into consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners wish to discuss? Hearing no, discussion on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move into administration and finance. First item this evening is the introduction of our deputy finance director. This will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners and the public. I'd like to introduce Katie Greenwood, and she's in the audience here. If you want to come up to the podium, Katie. Katie's coming to us with quite a bit of experience, CPA, and I'm going to let her introduce herself.
Nice to meet you, commissioners. As Linda said, I'm a CPA here in Dickinson, born and raised. I come from Southwest Water Authority, so I have some experience in governmental and utilities. So I look forward to learning how Dickinson does things, and I'm excited to work with you all.
Well, welcome aboard. We're all excited to have you. Well, Mrs. Carlson, we'll move right into the monthly financial report.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Okay, for our first report that we have, this is on the statement of fund activity, and our fund balance for the end of June is 11,278,438, and that's what the unassigned cash is. Our 1% sales tax monthly breakdown, so in June of 2025, it came in at 535,617, which is a decrease of 32,581 from 2024. Our half percent sales tax runs the same way. It came in at 267,808, and that's a decrease of 16,291 from '24. And '24 is the darker line, and the '25 is the orange line there. So the sales tax comparison, this is seven years at six months, and in the six-month total over seven years, 2025 is the highest, with coming in 253,171 over 2024, or 4.8%. Our hospitality tax, in the month of June, we received 104,383, which is $8,598 over 2024. And in the seven-years, six-month total, 2025 is 20,960 more than 2024, or 3.83%. Our occupancy is following the same trail. So occupancy came in $33,032 for June, or 7,861 more than 2024 at the same time. And our seven-years, six-month occupancy tax has been doing well overall in the last six months, with $11,609 over 2024, or 8.5%. Oil impact. In the oil tax, 2025 has not been above the 2024 line, but has been running right along the 2023 line. June came in at 260,485 less than 2024, but we're 2,792 above in 2023. So for the total over the six months, we are down 817,352 from 2024, or down 9.45%. But on the good side, we are up from 2023 by 4.09%. For the general fund revenue and expenditures, revenues and expenditures, we have collected 60% on the general fund revenues, and on the expenditures, we're at 46%, which is less than the benchmark of 50. Utility revenue, we've collected 52%, and then the expenditures is at 36%. And I stand for any questions you may have on the financial report.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions on the monthly financial report? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the report.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Baer to approve the monthly financial report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll have a presentation on the Andy PERS 401 defined contribution plan by HR Director Nomenek.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Actually, we're going to talk about two things today, and also the City of Dickinson Retirement Savings Plan. So first off, the defined benefit plan, if you remember, back in January, the PERS main defined benefit plan was closed, and then PERS opened up a DC plan for all of our new hires. At that time, we were required to participate in the Andy PERS DC plan if we wanted to let our current staff remain in the defined benefit main plan and the defined benefit public safety plan. Now, this year, with the passing of House Bill 1602, we have been provided the opportunity to discontinue participation in that Andy PERS DC plan and reopen our City of Dickinson Retirement Savings Plan, which is also a DC plan. If we were to do that, there is no impact to the employees that are currently enrolled in the North Dakota PERS Public Safety Plan or the main plan, and won't be any impact to the ones currently or in the future. There will be no fees assessed to us if we opt out of that Andy PERS DC plan. And that will give us the opportunity, then, to amend our DC plan that we currently have, the City of Dickinson Retirement Savings Plan that Brevera oversees for us. We would be able to reopen that, and everyone would go in there except for those new hires that would have the option to go into the public safety defined benefit plan, and that would be police, fire, EMS, and dispatchers. They would still go into that public safety plan. And then, any of those hired between January 1 of '25 and October 1 of '25 that went into that DC plan with PERS would then be able to go back into our DC plan, the retirement savings plan. And so some of the benefits of opening that, reopening the City of Dickinson Retirement Savings Plan is the contribution rates. Currently, those employees who stayed in the DC plan with us are contributing 7%, and so are the, so is the city. With the PERS plan, the employees were required to put in 4%, and they had an option to do an additional 3%. And the city was required to put in 5.26% and match that 3% if the employees put that in. So the city could end up putting in a higher percentage if the employees chose that much. Also, another reason would be cost control. With a fixed contribution rate from both the employee and the city, our current DC plan offers predictable costs compared to the PERS plan. So it helps us with budgeting and those type of things. We always know what percent we're going to be contributing as a city. And then, local control and customization, when we have our own DC plan, we have the ability to make changes if we choose to. When we're in the PERS plan, if they decide it's going up, we have no choice, we're going up. If we want to add something to our plan or take something out, we can do those sort of things. Administrative efficiency, this would also streamline the administrative process and just eliminate another plan for us to have to administer. And I would take any questions that you might have on this, but we would need two motions for, one to go out of the DC plan with PERS, and one to amend the DC plan with Brevera.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek?
I'm not sure that I'm ready to make a decision on that without understanding what, how it's, there's money savings, how much we're going to save, or what it's going to cost. I mean, I mean, this is the first I've heard of this, so.
Do we have a, like a fact sheet that you could provide us with if we table this?
I can provide you a fact sheet. I mean, the numbers are not concrete, because, like I said, the employee has the ability to do the extra 3%, and if they do, then the city has to contribute to that. So we never know what an employee is going to put in it, and we don't know what the future would lie. So if PERS decides the city has to contribute another 3%, we have no choice in that. But I can definitely provide something for you, showing you, you know, arbitrarily, if everybody were to put in the 7% or the 8.26% or not.
I mean, I would prefer that we bring this back at a work session during budget and talk about this before we make that decision.
Okay.
So we're not on any timeline with this, right?
No, it just, it would just take 60 days from the time when we make a decision to be able to go into that plan.
There was a reason we went into PERS, and now, now we're going backwards again. And I just want to understand the reasoning.
So the reason was, we had no choice. When PERS closed the main plan, the DC defined, or the defined benefit main plan, they closed that in January of '25. When they did that, they opened up the DC plan. So if we wanted our employees who were already in the main plan and the public safety defined benefit plan, we had to go into their DC plan. They didn't think about the, giving an option for political subs to opt out of it. So we had no choice but to go into it. Then they realized that there were some political subs that may have, may have opened up their own or had one already, but couldn't contribute to their own plan. So that's why they came up with that House Bill 1602, to allow us to be able to reopen our DC plan that we had. So, and to give you a little background and maybe to the public, but a defined contribution plan is very much like a 401K plan. And so you're, you know, you put in, you know, we have fixed amounts in our defined contribution plan, but then everybody invests in whatever funds they want to invest in, it goes up and down like a 401K. But a defined benefit plan, we know what the benefit will be when they retire. It's like a pension plan. So of course, when we had that option to go to the defined benefit plan with PERS back in 2019, we jumped at that, and we were able to get all of our employees to be able to have the option to go into the defined benefit plan. So public safety had their own, and the rest of the employees had the main plan. Some employees decided to stay in. We have currently 12 city employees that are still in that DC plan. They chose not to go over to the PERS defined benefit. So we still have, we're still paying fees on that, we still have people in that plan. If we were to close the DC plan with PERS, that would get us back into that DC plan with Brevera, and everyone would be in one plan instead of two DC plans. Does that make a little bit more sense?
It's, it's, it's up to the commissioners if you guys, if you want to add it to a work session.
I would, go ahead.
I would be fine with table, and that way Commissioner Riddle could be a part of it too.
Yeah, even if we can get some information between now and the next meeting.
Yeah.
On the benefits, and, I mean, just some fact sheet, and the difference in costs, and.
Yep, I can do that, and they have some little, like, quick little videos I can send to all of you that explain all the plans real quick and easy.
Okay. So I'd look, then, for a motion.
I'd move to table it till our next meeting.
Motion to table by Commissioner Frederick.
Aye, second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Baer.
I do believe the League of Cities put out a webinar explaining this new plan, and maybe that would be helpful to get to the other commissioners to watch.
Sure, yep, sounds good.
Okay, if there's no further discussion or questions, all in favor of tabling this Andy PERS 401 defined contribution plan resolution, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move right into the Fourth Amendment of the City of Dickinson Retirement Savings Plan.
We actually talked about both of them.
Okay.
At the same time.
Okay, then we'll hold on. Then we'll just move into your HR monthly report.
First up, we have police departments. We've got four openings, and we're in the process of doing some interviews. I believe an offer was actually made, so we're kind of waiting on that. Fire department, firefighter, paramedic, it shows four openings. However, we have filled some of those. I believe we have one paramedic, paramedic left to fill. Part-time firefighter, we have two openings. We did hire one, and we have one in the background. Public works, street department, we have two openings, and we've been doing interviews. However, I did get a resignation this week, so I think that changes it to three. Solid waste operator, we've got one opening, and we are reopening that position. We did not, we're not able to make any offers. Buildings and grounds, we had one opening, we did fill that. Seasonal water, solid, sorry, seasonal solid waste laborer, looks like they're still trying to fill that one opening. Utility operator, we have one opening, they've been doing interviews for that one. Scale service rep, we have one opening. Our current representative for the scale went over to the motor vehicle department. Community development and engineering and buildings and codes, we have the project engineer position open. We did do one interview this week for that. And then, as you know, deputy finance director position has been filled. Legacy square, we did fill the maintenance worker, it's a seasonal position, and he has been working for us. And then the motor vehicle division, we had four openings for title and registration technician. We filled three of those, and we have one in the background. And then the branch office manager, we did fill, that one also is in the background. And then library, we have a limited hour library building service worker, we have one opening and doing interviews on that. And then I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions on the monthly HR report?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving into public works, we have a task order for Apex Engineering for lift station number seven. This will be presented by Public Works Director Prowse.
Good evening, President Decker and commissioners. Before you tonight, to prevent, present a task order agreement with Apex Engineering to evaluate lift station number seven improvements. We've been having some issues on lift station number seven. This task order agreement will get us to about the 30% design. It'll evaluate the current conditions, make an assessment, and then come back to us with a potential estimated amount to upgrade lift station number seven and to bring it fully back on, to improve it, so we can continue to operate it as we are. Some of this interior stuff that we're noticing, the wet wells disintegrating, the electrical components are in the exact same building complex as the wet wells located, so there's a vapor wall that'll be looked at putting inside of it. And then, as I said, this task order will evaluate and assess that condition of that site in a total cost not to exceed $42,200. Public works staff and engineer staff has reviewed the task order and recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. This is task order 2025-4. Any questions for Mr. Prowse from the commission? No questions, I'd look for a motion on this task order.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further questions? Discussion. Hearing none, will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Move into public safety. We have a listing agreement for a surplus ladder truck. This will be presented by Deputy Fire Chief Sully. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, commissioners, I've just brought forth the listing agreement for Burnley Mountain to list our ladder truck that was surplus that last meeting. This was reviewed by Attorney Christine Nowinko, and we have gotten all the changes we requested. Just looking for approval on that.
All right, thank you. Any questions on the ladder truck listing?
Did they give you an idea what they think they can get for it, or?
Not until we get this agreement. I'm guessing they're, I've sent them information, they haven't gotten anything back. I think they want to get an agreement with us first, and then it'll give us a value. But based on looking at their website, it's going to be somewhere between the 1,500,000, I'm guessing, hoping.
What's, what's, what is it, 35 years old, that ladder truck?
It's 30 years old.
30 years old, okay. Okay, any other questions on the surplus ladder truck? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into community development. First item up, we have a Bank of North Dakota loan application for the Baylor Building expansion. This will be presented by Senior Engineer Keller.
Sorry about that. Mr. President, commissioners, for your consideration, is a letter of support for the Baylor Building Expansion Project. This is for a loan application to the Bank of North Dakota for $5 million to support the project construction. This project was competitively selected for application for a state revolving loan by the Bank of North Dakota. So we had to compete against other projects to get this, and we received our full asking, our full asking price. The next step in the process is the actual loan application process, which will include full terms and conditions. The city attorney has reviewed the letter, and the city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions on this letter of support? This loan application for the Baylor Building Expansion. Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Keller, you have a Baylor Building project contract amendment.
Mr. President, commissioners, for your consideration, is a contract amendment for Burns, for Burns &amp; McDonald to provide construction engineering for the Baylor Building Project. The amendment includes bid support, RFI, or request for information responses, as-built drawings, in-person inspections, and other construction engineering support. The amendment is for $382,678 on a time and material not to exceed basis. The city attorney has reviewed the contract amendment, and the city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions for Mr. Keller on this contract amendment? This, the amendment that you have in front of us, is this due to just changes in the project, or?
No, no, Mr. President. The amendment is, when, are the original amendment included up to bid documents? This is for the actual construction engineering support.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. All right. We have the Eagleview Master Service Agreement. This will be presented by Engineering Community Director, Development Director Skoloszczak.
Good evening, Mr. President and commissioners. For your consideration, is a master service agreement, or MSA, with Pictometry International Corp. doing business as Eagleview. The benefits of having the MSA versus providing just a standard contract for each change to our systems, our consistent terms and conditions regardless of the type of change to the contract, City of Dickinson utilization of some new software tools, making the system easier to use, and then our current contract, which is utilizing through Connect Explorer software, that, that software component will no longer be available through the software, and so this will ultimately level us up to the, to the next available software package that no longer includes Connect Explorer. And this will allow us that access to the aerial imagery that we, that we have, and ultimately, there's a significant time reduction for staff, and also this information's available to the public, so city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this MSA? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Dr. Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Josh, you have a Northwest Regional Pond DWR grant contract.
Good evening again, Mr. President and commissioners. For your consideration, is a grant contract with the North Dakota State Water Commission to fund a portion of the feasibility and engineering study at a 60% amount, not to exceed $240,000 as specified in state contract. Total City of Dickinson cost share is estimated to be $160,000. The project original task order for this was awarded to Apex The project original task order for this was awarded to Apex Engineering Group Incorporated, which took place at the February 4th, 2025 City Commission Meeting. The intent of that task order, that initial task order, was to gather some information and ultimately prep the submittal package for this grant submittal to the Department of Water Resources. Project was approved with the 2025 capital improvement project budget and paid through the gross production tax. The ultimate intent with this project is to look at the, the number of properties that are located along the Dickinson Drainage Way, which are impacted by the flood insurance rate map based on the update that occurred in August of 2024. Approximately 750 properties are now within that floodplain. Many of these properties are concentrated along the Dickinson Drainage Way, or the majority of the properties that are in the floodplain within the city limits are located along this drainage way. First phase of this project is intended to be a feasibility study to determine the benefits and costs of a controlled pond-type system designed to manage and regulate high-flow events, and then from there we'll work through modeling, alternative analysis, concept design, and then some cost estimating and whatnot. City engineering staff recommends approval of this grant award. We do anticipate at the next City Commission Meeting to present, assuming approval of this, to present the task order amendment for Apex Engineering. Again, engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Skoloszczak. Any questions on this DWR Grant Contract?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Baer.
Ms. Skoloszczak, I have a question. Do you have a, a map showing what the floodplain is and the area that could be affected on this? As I was reading through this, I was curious as to what the area is.
Commissioner Baer, I know I do have a map available. I believe I presented it at the work session in June, but I can make that available to you. The, the map that we presented not only showed the properties, but then those individual structures that are included that are forced to pay the flood insurance.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a, Mr. Skoloszczak, we have a drainage easement dedication of Lot 1, Block 4 of the Houston's Third.
Good evening again, Mr. President and Commissioners. For your consideration is a drainage easement located within Lot 1, Block 4 of Houston's Third Edition. This drainage easement is required to allow for the urban reconstruction of the frontage load, road along 21st Street East, which is part of the 2025 Road Maintenance Project. Ultimately, a swell will be constructed to prevent stormwater from flowing into the existing building located on that subject property. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Skoloszczak. Any questions on this easement?
Where are we at with that frontage road? Is that in, is that a project that we have coming up?
That's included in the 2025 Road Maintenance Project that was bid out.
So that's going to get paved and we're going to get that?
We're going to get that all constructed as an urbanized section. The, the last update from Central Specialties Incorporated was their paving crews should probably be here either very late August or early September, so prior to that we'll start seeing the grading and some of that work occurring up there, but that was based on their current schedule. That's obviously subject to change.
Are there any other questions? I'd look for a motion on this drainage easement.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Ms. Skoloszczak, we have the permanent pedestrian easement for Block 14 replat on North Hill Acres Second.
Good evening again, Mr. President and Commissioners. For your consideration is a pedestrian easement located within Block 14 of the replat of North Hills Acres Second Edition. This pedestrian easement is intended to accommodate the pedestrian traffic where a parking lot is currently located, but ultimately the parking lot is rarely utilized at any level of full capacity. This easement reduces the new sidewalk required for the property by approximately about 350 lineal feet, and this is a cost savings to this individual property owner. This subject property is located within the 2025 Road Maintenance Project area, and this was part of our discussions and kind of a collaborative approach to helping or working with that individual property owner and to ultimately try to limit or reduce their special improvement district assessment amount. So, city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Skoloszczak. Any questions? This is a permanent pedestrian easement. There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a final plat for the Jolif, Jolif Acres. This will be presented by City Planner Burcek.
Mr. President, it is time for the, the public hearing.
Oh, okay, yep, went right through that. Sorry about that.
We're late, actually. That's right.
All right. Public hearing for the easement vacation for Greenville Third Edition.
Good evening, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So, the applicant is requesting the vacation of a utility easement located in the Greenville Third Edition subdivision. So this is the easement that is within Blocks 1 and 2 and Blocks 3, Lots 1 and 4. What the heck that was written as? Sorry. It is in Blocks 1 and 2 and Lots 1 through 4 of Block 3 and 4 of the Greenville Third Edition subdivision, located within the east half of Section 9, Township 140 North, Range 96 West, located within the City of Dickinson's extraterritorial zone. So the applicant has submitted the full filled-out petition to vacate this easement. We have not received any public comment regarding this easement. The applicant has a representative online to answer any questions that you guys might have, and staff would recommend approval of this easement vacation.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Any questions on Resolution 28-2025, which is a Greenville Third Edition easement vacation? Okay, yeah, we tabled, my fault, 27, yep, we tabled the other one, so. Had it written down already. So this would be Resolution 27-2025. If there are no questions from the Commission, this is a public hearing. I would invite anyone from the public that wishes to come forward, has any questions or comments on this easement vacation, please come forward at this time. Anyone have any questions on the easement vacation for the Greenville Third Edition? Seeing no one has any comments or questions, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions for City Planner Burcek? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We also have a public hearing, a rezone request for the Schmidt rezone, and this will be presented by City Planner Burcek.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So, the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from General Commercial GC and Agriculture, or AG, to Rural Residential, or RR, for Lot 1 of Block 1 of the Schmidt Minor Subdivision, located within the City of Dickinson's extraterritorial zone. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow the applicant to construct a primary residence located on the subdivided lot. You can see the lot outlined in blue where it would be located, just along Highway 10. A companion minor subdivision plat was scheduled for a public hearing at the July 9th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, and will be heard in front of City Commission during the August 6th Commission Meeting. Staff has not received any public comments regarding this rezone request. The applicant should be present to answer any questions that you guys might have, and staff would recommend approval of this rezone, subject to the approval of the associated subdivision.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. This is Orte, oh, excuse me, Ordinance 1824, and are there any questions from the Commissioners before I open the public hearing? All right, I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone has any concerns or questions on the rezone request for the Schmidt rezone, Ordinance 1824, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns or questions. Anyone have any comments on this rezone request? Any questions or comments? Seeing no one has any questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further comments or questions on 1824? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve 1824.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Ms. Burcek, you have a special use permit for the barking lot.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So the applicant is requesting approval of a special use permit application for a home-based dog grooming business located at 270 Dakota Place within the City of Dickinson. This business would be located within a primary residence on a 0.268 acre lot. The property is currently zoned as Low Density Residential, or R-1. The applicant previously had a special use permit for a dog grooming business in another property located, or zoned as R1. They're just moving and we're looking to move the special use permit alongside themselves. Staff has not received any public comments regarding this application, and I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have, and staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions listed at the end of the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. This is special use permit 003-2025. Any questions, Commissioners? I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone has any questions, comments, concerns, please come forward, please state your name, let us know what your concerns are or questions. Anyone from the public have any comments or questions on this special use permit? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns or questions, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a zoning text amendment for Chapter 62 Agriculture Development Minimum presented by City Planner Burcek.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So the community development staff is requesting approval of a zoning text amendment to Section 62-162 Development Regulations, as found in Table 62-162-3A Summary of Site Development Regulations in Chapter 62 Zoning of the Dickinson Municipal Code. So this amendment would increase the minimum lot area required of the agricultural, or AG, zoning district from five acres, as is currently required, to 10 acres. So this proposed amendment aligns Dickinson zoning regulations with many of the adopted land development regulations within the state of North Dakota, and the proposed increase in ag minimum lot size may also accomplish decreasing the potential for creating land use conflicts with residentially zoned properties within the City of Dickinson's extraterritorial zone, as well as preventing the proliferation of subdivisions consisting of five acre lots that could hinder redevelopment patterns in the future. We have not received any public comments regarding this text amendment. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. This is Ordinance 1825. And are there any questions or comments for city staff on this zoning text amendment? Just to clarify, right now we're going, we're at five acres, they're allowed five acres, but this would jump up to 10, only if it's zoned ag.
Yes, so if they're looking to have anything less than 10 but above one acre, then they would be encouraged to rezone to rural residential if they're looking for residential uses.
Right, so they could go to RR, R1, R2, or?
Yeah.
Any of the other subcategories.
As well as GC or CC, anything like that.
Any other questions on 1825? If not, I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to come forward, please state your name, let us know your concerns or questions. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public have any concerns on our zoning text amendment? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns on Ordinance 1825, Commissioners, do you have any further questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve the Ordinance 1825.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next public hearing will be a Chapter 58 Code Amendment for Traffic and Vehicles. This will be presented by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. Included in your packet is the ordinance identified as Ordinance Number 1822. Just to recap, the most recent legislative session brought about several changes to the criminal and traffic laws in the state of North Dakota. This ordinance is to update our criminal code to mirror those changes. Those changes by state law in North Dakota will become effective August 1 of 2025. So just to recap what those changes are, we're seeing increases in fines with regard to careless driving. Of course, if in fact a careless driver were to be cited for causing injury to a snow removal equipment or first responder, those incidences can be elevated to an infraction. We've also going to be some changes, seeing some changes with regard to roundabouts. The city engineer keeps telling us we're going to get one of those, so we're, we're going to be prepared when that happens. So again, they've changed the law, so you don't need to exit, use your turn signal when you're exiting a roundabout now. Also going to see some changes to window tint. The law is going to allow drivers to have darker windows with darker window tint. We've updated the fine that we will see with regard to overtaking a school bus. That fine's going to increase from $100 to $250. We're also going to have some changes to our criminal code section that's going to allow the municipal court judge to amend charges to driving without a license when we're dealing with driving under suspension-related matters. We have seen no changes since the first reading, and I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions, Commissioners? For Mrs. Winko or city staff on the Chapter 58 Code Amendment for Traffic and Vehicles? Hearing no questions, I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to come forward, has any concerns or questions on 1822, please come forward, state your name. Anyone from the public? Does anyone have any concerns on Ordinance? Does anyone have any concerns on Ordinance 1822, Chapter 58 Code Amendment, Traffic and Vehicles? Seeing no one has any concerns, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any questions? Not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve Ordinance 1822.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Well, our second public hearing is a Chapter 58 Code Amendment off highway vehicles, and
this will be presented by Chief Siani.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. To recap some of the ordinance changes that we're proposing in this, it was basically addressing the UTV issues with how it was previously written was a 12-year-old getting a state class on the operation of UTV, was able to operate that UTV on a city street or highway within the city limits. That's gonna be changing, that it has to be a licensed driver, and that UTV or side-by-side would have to be licensed, insured, and registered. The other issues that we addressed with this ordinance change is the Class 1 and Class 2 off-highway vehicles, specifically the dirt bikes and four-wheelers and three-wheelers would be prohibited to be used within the city street, within, within the city limits. There was concern with the last, during the first reading, regarding snowmobiles, and we missed the snowmobile ordinance, so snowmobiles are considered a Class 3 vehicle, but there is a specific ordinance in our code which addresses snowmobiles specifically, so there's no changes to the snowmobile portion of this, so they are still allowed to drive a registered, licensed, insured snowmobile in the city limits, as long as they're taking the most direct route from their residence out of city limits. So that was a fortunate miss, but still was a mistake, but it's not something that I don't, I don't believe we're gonna come back to try to address the snowmobile issue. We really haven't had many issues over the years, if any, with snowmobile matters, but it was just cleaner to keep all those type of vehicles under control for this type of ordinance. But with that, I haven't, I received no public input or concerns with, since the first reading, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Chief Siani. Any questions for Chief Siani or city staff on this Ordinance 1823? There are no questions from the Commission. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishes to come forward, please state your name, let us know your questions or concerns on the Chapter 58 Code Amendment off highway vehicles. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public have any concerns on our Chapter 58 Code Amendment off highway vehicles? Again, this is Ordinance 1823. Seeing no one has any comments or questions for the city commission or city staff, I will close the, oh, we have one.
Sorry, I don't know how to do this. I just wanna say before I start that I'm not speaking for the Dickinson Press in any way. I think my question was just, are they, the BMX bikes and the other vehicles, are they completely banned within city limits, or are they just banned on the city streets?
That, my understanding it is banned usage with, within the city limits. Am I correct, Chief Siani?
If you're referring to a BMX pedal bicycle, that's not included in this ordinance whatsoever. This is for dirt bike, motorized dirt bikes.
Cool.
Motorized.
No. We have one other individual coming forward.
Dave Bedoin. My question is, the uses of snowmobiles when there's like a blizzard, I think you have some stipulations with snowmobiles used if there's not an emergency or anything. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yes, during inclement weather, snowmobiles are allowed to be used in town if there's a, I don't remember if it's declared snow emergency, I don't believe it needs to be as long as there's some type of significant snow event. However, the snowmobiles still are allowed to be operated in, in city limits, as long as they're registered and insured and a licensed driver. They can drive the snowmobile during, when there's snow on the ground, taking the most direct route from their residence to outside of city limits. So they're still allowed to be used within city limits. They also can be used on that route, taking any, any roadways that are not maintained during the winter, so if there's, if they don't get plowed, roads don't get plowed or something like that, and there's access for those as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Bedoin, you can't use your snowmobile to cut across Rocky Butte Park?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
No, I'm just.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you for the clarification, Chief Siani.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve the final reading of, what is it?
1823.
1823, sorry. Lost my place there.
Yep. So we have a motion to approve the final reading of 1823 by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, now we'll come back to, let's see if I can find where I'm at here. I think we're on the final plat, right? Of, is it, you'll have to correct me, if it's Joliffe or Joliffe?
I believe it's Joliffe.
Joliffe Acres. Okay, this will be presented by City Planner Burcek.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So the applicant is requesting a approval of a final major subdivision plat for the Joliffe Acres subdivision. The proposed subdivision is a replat of Blocks 1 and 2 and lots 1 through 4 of Block 3 and 4 of the Greenville 3rd Edition subdivision, located within the east half of Section 9, Township 140 North, Range 96 West, within the city of Dickinson's extraterritorial zone. So the property is approximately 26.467 acres, and according to the applicant, the purpose of the subdivision is to combine these smaller residential plots in order to construct a residence when, while utilizing the remaining space for a hobby farm. Staff has not received any public comments regarding this plat. The applicant's representative is online to answer any questions that you guys might have, and staff would recommend approval.
And this should be 2825, right? 28?
29, right?
Is it? Just kind of, I think it's 28. I think I jumped the gun before and I had to go back to 27, so I wanna make sure.
The SUP should have a resolution.
Should be 27, yeah, so this should be 28.
It should have one.
Yeah. Yeah, this is 28. Right, 28. Ms. Bintok?
We did not do the resolution number 2825 for the SUP, so that's what, why this one should be 29.
I think we have 2725 for the public hearing, where the vacation for that resolution, special use permit would have been 28-2025 for a parking lot, and this one would be 29.
29, okay, so this is 29. Okay, so this is Resolution 29-2025. Again, this is a final plat. Commissioners, questions for staff?
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a Renaissance Zone request for Pop Soda Shack. This will be presented by City County Planner Josephson.
Thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, you have in front of you a request for Renaissance Zone project for Ludwig &amp; Jones doing business as the Pop Soda Shack. This would be a, this is a, it's actually a commercial rehabilitation project. It's located on, at 716 West Villard. The applicants are currently operating on a lot to the west of there. They are, they have purchased the lot to the east of there, and they're gonna build a permanent structure at that, at that location. The estimated cost of improvements is $275,000, which well exceeds the threshold of 75% of the, of the city's assessed value of it, so they're requesting an eight-year, an eight-year exemption, both an eight-year period of time for the project. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Are there any questions from the Commission on the Pop Soda Shack? Renaissance Zone request. This will be Resolution 30-2025.
Mr. President, I would just, I do have a conflict regarding this, so I am going to abstain from the vote on this one.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Frederick. Any questions? Not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve Resolution 30-2025.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer, and I will second. Any further discussion on the Renaissance Zone request? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next Renaissance Zone request is Martin's Welding and Refrigeration. This will be Resolution 31-2025. This will be presented by City County Planner Josephson.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, so this is a request, again, this is an eight-year, eight-year exemption. The property is located at, at 1500 Villard Street West and 1520 Villard Street West. They're already operating on the 1500 block, and they purchased the lot to the, vacant lot to the west of them, used to be a hotel there, and they are gonna build a brand-new, a new 6,000-square-foot building on that vacant lot and then connect it together. They estimate the cost of this is gonna be a million dollars, and that exceeds the 75% of the, of the city's value of it, which is $358,000. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions for Mr. Josephson on 31-2025? And I will be abstaining from the vote on this project.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. There any more questions or comments for city staff on this Renaissance Zone request? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, and just to let you know, these are the second and third Renaissance Zone projects that have been approved by the city this year. I'll go, we will go ahead, we will go ahead and forward, letter up to the state to get conditional approval, and then they can go through their permitting and construction process.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson.
Yep, thank you. All right, there are no citizens signed up for public comments this evening, so Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions? If not, all right, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.